Welcome to the IASB webinar, Maintaining Your Community's Trust, Legal and Ethical Campaigns for the School Board. If at any point you experience audio troubles and you're listening to your computer speakers, you can call into the webinar through your telephone. Just open up the chat window and dial the phone number listed there. Right now, I am going to enter that into chat feature. And you should be able to see that now. This particular webinar is so important for you to stay engaged, and we really want to make this a better learning experience for all. So if you have questions, simply open up the Q and A feature at the bottom or top of your page depending on your computer screen, and we'll respond to your questions throughout the session. So send us your thoughts and questions, please. And I'll introduce myself, and then we'll introduce our panelists. I'm Luann Gavist. I'm on the Board Development Team here at IASB, and I will be facilitating today's conversation with our panelists, who will be sharing their expertise and insights with you today. I'm going to turn it over to Tammy.
So I'm Tammy Botava. I'm the Communications Director here at IASB, and I'm also the main point of contact for candidates for school election questions.
And I'm one of Tammy Luann's colleagues. I'm Harry Heiligenthal, and I'm a member of the Board Development Team, and glad that you're able to join us this afternoon.
And I'm very pleased to welcome our two guest presenters. We're very excited that they're here with us today. Megan Tuckert, to my left, she's the Executive Director for the Iowa Ethics and Campaign Board. And Molly Wyden is the Legal Counsel for the Iowa Secretary of State's Office. We're very excited they're going to be sharing their expertise with us today. So thanks for joining us. So we are going to go over our goals for today. First, we're going to review some key dates quickly, so everyone is up to speed on what's coming down the pipeline. We're going to master the basics of filing with Molly. Megan is going to share some conflict of interest laws and some three must-know campaign finance laws. We'll explore an ethical scenario, and we'll hear some cautionary tales. But first, we would like to know who is participating. So are you a brand-new candidate? Are you a citizen considering board service? Are you a former school board member or a current school board member? Do you pretend to be a school business official, board secretary, or other? So Tammy, I just launched the poll. So if you do not have a particular web filter or blocker that's preventing you to see the webinar, excuse me, the poll, you should be seeing that now, and you can make your selection. Looks like Tammy, most people have voted. Let's just give them a couple more seconds to finish voting. So I'm going to go ahead and end the poll and launch the results, and then you can talk about them. Great, so I'm going to share those right. So it looks like the majority of our attendees are brand-new candidates. We've got some considering candidacy and then an other. And I never know what other is, but that's okay. Okay, I'm going to close the poll, and you only did close it on your side. So like I said, we're going to cover some key dates quickly. Hopefully, everyone knows that the candidate filing deadline is September 19th at 5:00 p.m., and you have until September 24th to withdraw by 5:00 p.m. November 5th is Election Day. The first canvas of votes for all districts is November 12th or 13th, and the new and second canvas of votes for districts spanning multiple counties is November 18th or 19th. And that one is new, so I'm going to have Molly explain the purpose of that second-tier canvas of votes.
So with the change in the law to combine city and school elections, the goal was to place them on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, which is the same day as the general election in even-numbered years, and was already the date that city elections were being held. And part of doing that was to replicate the general election process for voters every year. So in general elections, elections are run by the county auditor for the voters in their county, and that is how the city and school election will be run this year. So the second-tier canvas gives an opportunity for jurisdictions, for cities and schools who are in multiple counties, to combine their results and get a final result. So while that wasn't necessary in the past, it is necessary this year. Why that's important is if your school district is contained within more than one county, the results of the election will not be final until after that second canvas is held.
Good to know, very important to follow that. So our first section, we're going to talk about filing 101, and then some potential conflicts of interest that may prevent a candidate from running for the board in the first place. So Molly, can you share some filing tips for candidates?
Sure, so there are two components to filing for office, the first of which is your affidavit of candidacy. That just contains some basic information. For example, how you want your name to appear on the ballot, what office you're running for, if you're running to fill a vacancy. And I should point out that if you're running for an office just because the term is up, that is not running to fill a vacancy. You're running to fill a vacancy if there is truly a vacancy on the board, if you're running for a midterm vacancy, somebody left before their term was up. So before you fill out your paperwork and your affidavit, talk with your school secretary to determine if you're running for a new term or to fill a vacancy. The second component is the nomination paperwork, and that is where you collect citizens' signatures. They have to be eligible electors. They do not have to be registered voters. So keep that in mind while you're collecting signatures. For the nomination petitions, I would recommend printing off one petition and filling in the header information. So the information that has your name, the office that you're running for, the stuff at the top of the page first, and then running copies of that page that has the perfectly filled-out header. This will ensure that there's no errors in your header information, which could cause issues when you go to file. Your affidavit needs to be notarized, so you can't sign your affidavit until you're in the presence of a notary. The paperwork has to be filed with the board secretary of your school district by 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, September 19th. Your board secretary will have information about how many signatures are required. It depends based on how many individuals were registered to vote in your school district as of May 1st, and your school secretary has worked with your county auditor to determine what that number is going to be. And then new this year, there's circulator information, which is required on every nomination petition page. If you've downloaded the petition page on our website, we have included a box for the circulation information. So I really recommend downloading the newest nomination petition page from our website. But if you happen to use a form from years past, there should be sufficient, there is sufficient room at the bottom, to put in the circulator's name, signature, address, and phone number. Unfortunately, we have to do this because there was an instance of fraud, where somebody was signing names on behalf of eligible electors. So having this information is for the benefit of the filing officer, so it can be filled out anytime before the paperwork is filed. If you, as a candidate, circulate your own nomination paperwork, you still need to fill in that circulator information that is still required.
You said that changed just past what, just in the session?
Correct, it went into effect on May 16th of 2019. So unless you are a real early bird collecting signatures back in April and March, which I also would not recommend, you are required to include that circulator information.
I'm going to follow up on why you think that might not be the best time.
Sure.
To start that earlier.
So I think it's on one of our points a little bit later. But the risks of gathering signatures far in advance of the filing deadline is that people often move out of jurisdictions, and if they're not an eligible elector of your school district, when you file that paperwork, their signature can be challenged and may not be beheaded.
Thanks, Molly. So we're wondering where you are at right now in the filing process. Have you already turned in paperwork? Are you collecting signatures right now? Haven't decided yet if you're even running, or something else? So you can see I launched the poll for those that can see it, and people are responding pretty quickly. Unless they're deciding if they haven't decided that they're running yet. Okay, it looks like most of the folks have voted. So I'm going to go ahead and end the poll, and then Tammy, you can talk through what you see in the results.
We're about 40/60, so 40% have already turned in paperwork, so way to go. And 60% are collecting signatures now. Very important stuff.
And some have already said they're not sure if they're running or not. I think they're already here, so I'm going to close the poll.
Yeah, Luann, I had a comment for, or a question for Molly. We often hear you talk about gathering extra signatures. Would you share a little bit about the importance of that?
Yep, so I would always recommend to candidates that they exceed the minimum number of signatures. And that's, and I'll talk a little bit about the objection process later on in the webinar. But there is the opportunity for other eligible electors in your school district to object to your paperwork. And one way that you can insulate or protect yourself from an objection is by collecting extra signatures.
Do you have a certain, are you going to talk about this later, about how many extra people should get, depending on how many?
So for some of you, you only have to collect 10 signatures to run for the school board, so there's no problem with collecting 20 or 30. It's a great way to meet people in your community, engage them with your campaign, and raise awareness that you're running for office. Now, if you're in a very large school district and you have to collect, you know, 100 signatures, it may not be feasible to collect double that. But, you know, really having a good buffer that you feel comfortable with, a couple dozen extra, if you're in a larger jurisdiction, would be a good idea.
Great. So if you're elected to your board, you are considered a public official and duty-bound to serve the public interest. However, you're still a private citizen, obviously, so you can participate in outside employment and activities. School board members must comply with conflict of interest laws in Iowa code. Megan, can you share some information on conflict of interest laws?
Sure. So there's several statutes that you should be aware of. And on the slide in front of you, there's some brief information followed by the code section in parentheses. And so I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights right now. But I would encourage you to look at those statutes or give me or Tammy a call or talk to your attorney if you think one of these could be an issue for you and your candidacy. So the first one is Iowa Code Section 279.7A, and that section says that school board members cannot earn more than $6,000 in a fiscal year from their school district. There's a couple, or there's an exception if it's for a contract that's competitively bid. That would be things like if you were going to be a substitute teacher or you're selling goods or services to the school, you'd generally be limited to that $6,000 threshold.
And Megan, that's a change just this past year, right? It used to be $2,500, so that's been increased.
Right, right. So the legislature this past year has increased that to $6,000. And the next one is Section 71.1 of the code, and that's our nepotism statute. And it says that a school board member cannot appoint a relative within three degrees of consanguinity or affinity unless the position is first approved by the school board. And I think we have a slide about that, so.
What's consanguinity, and how do you say it?
Yeah. So that just means within so many degrees of relationship. And so we have a little chart here that shows what those relationships are. But that's your parents, your spouse, your children, brothers, sisters, I think nieces and nephews, parents, grandparents, grandchildren, that sort of thing. So this probably doesn't come up too often with school board members because you aren't typically hiring anybody unless the board is approving it. Another one is 68B.2A, and this section talks about outside employment and activities. And what this section says is, first of all, you can't use any school resources that would give your outside employment or activity a benefit or advantage that's not available to the general public. So for example, if you are, if you have some kind of business activity, you can't go to the school office and ask the secretary to make copies for you or provide you with some kind of service that wouldn't be available to other folks. The next thing that 68B.2A addresses is taking any official action or performing any official duty on an outside employment or activity. So from time to time, outside employments and activities come before the school board, and if one of yours does, then you would have to publicly disclose the conflict and refrain from taking any official action or performing an official duty. And performing official duty includes not just voting, but trying to influence a vote. So if you have a conflict, you need to publicly disclose that at a school board meeting. And then you are in the position of the public. You wouldn't be eligible to sit in a closed session. You wouldn't be privy to any confidential information. You should be removed from that deliberation. Also, we have a gift law that's found in 68B.22. That's a rather complicated statute, and I could talk about that for an hour. But in a nutshell, you can't take gifts from folks that have a financial interest in the school board that is somehow unique. So that's typically vendors or prospective vendors or somehow somebody who would be affected financially in some way by the actions of the school board. And if someone is your restricted donor, you cannot accept a gift from them unless one of 19 exceptions to the gift law applies. The most common exception that most folks sort of know about is what I call the $3 exception. And that exception says that if all else fails, you can always accept a non-monetary gift of $3 or less from one of your restricted donors. But there's some other exceptions having to do with if you're asked to speak at a meeting, they can provide you with food and travel costs. I won't, like I said, I won't get into all those exceptions, but you should be cognizant of the gift law and that it could be restricting some of those relationships. And if you do have friendship with a restricted donor, you can maintain that friendship, but you just can't accept any gifts from them. And those are, I get tons of questions about the gift law. And if you are lucky enough to be elected to serve, and you have a question, you're always welcome to give me a call and talk about that in more detail. Another provision that we get a lot of calls about is Iowa Code Section 68A.505, and that prohibits the expenditure of public monies for political purposes. And political purposes is defined as expressly advocating in favor or against a candidate or ballot issue. So you can't use public monies to tell people how to vote in an election. And that would include your own candidacy as well as someone else's candidacy. Or more commonly, we get questions about ballot issues when school districts are engaging in the ballot issue process. They give me a lot of calls about what they can do to educate the public on a ballot issue. Finally, we have a provision in the Iowa Code 301.28, and that prohibits school board members from being an agent for a textbook or school supply company. And that includes, and I got the code in front of me just to make sure I got it right, that includes sports apparel and equipment. So that statute is a ban, a complete bar, on school board members from being an agent for a school textbook or a school supply company that's engaging in a contract with the district. And there's no exception for public bidding. So that's something to keep in mind if you own a printing company or a sports apparel company in the community that sells goods to the district.
And if anyone has questions, you can type in, as Luann mentioned earlier, anytime.
Right.
Or if they think of it later, feel free to call you or Megan or Molly. We're here to take questions. So there was many considerations for candidates as you plan your campaigns. Harry, can you share some advice for candidates on why it's important to run legal, ethical, and informed campaigns?
I sure can, and I would just put in one more plug. We're so grateful for Megan and Molly's willingness and encouraging folks if they have questions to call and contact them, so that's great. This section, this piece, probably, I hope, will sound like commonsense kinds of considerations. Nonetheless, good for us to remember. So whether you are the only person running for a seat or you're running against other candidates, it's just important to remember you're demonstrating to your public, to the other candidates, and to existing board members how you do business and what they can expect from you. And we find ourselves telling candidates, reminding candidates, this really has big implications for what your constituents might and others might expect from you in the future. A second piece that we believe it's worth reminding yourself is you really are a role model for students. And just ask you to think about the tremendous opportunity you have to shape their view of a school board candidate and what it means to run as a school board member and run an ethical campaign. Things like, what do you hope students will notice about your ethics and how you operate? And what do you want students to see and observe as far as how you follow the law? I think you could probably summarize all this up in a short statement. People are watching, and this is worth taking time to pause and reflect on these kind of questions. How do my ethics influence my actions and my decision-making? And what ethics influence how I interact with others and how I treat others as a candidate? Megan or Molly, any additional insights that either of you would share about running a legal, ethical campaign?
Sure. Thanks, Harry. I would second everything you just said. One of the things that people should be aware of if you have to create a campaign committee with the Ethics Board, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Those reports and statements are public records. They're on our website within 45 minutes of you filing those statements, and they are reviewed by the public and the press and your opponent. And they are a reflection of how you are conducting your campaign and how you're going to serve in office. So if you file sloppy paperwork or if you file things late, it's a reflection on you. And so I would encourage people to take those things seriously and make sure that you are conducting yourself in a way that gives the public confidence that you can do a good job. If you have trouble balancing your campaign disclosure report with a $2,000 or $3,000 campaign, the public may not have confidence that you can handle a much larger budget when it comes to the school district.
Yeah, thank you. It makes a lot of sense. It's not only what you say as a candidate, but what you do and how people see you carrying out that process, so cool.
Luann, do we have any questions? We do, we have a conflict of interest question that I'll pose. So one of our attendees says that they own a restaurant that they serve and use, a couple of clubs from the school use it for catering vacancies and other functions. So the question is, if this person runs and is elected, can they continue to serve the school clubs that they currently serve? That they booster and those kinds of things.
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think that's going to come down to the Section 279.7A, and that talks about the $6,000 threshold. So you cannot sell more than $6,000 for the goods or services in a calendar year unless it's competitively bid. And restaurants, to my knowledge, don't competitively bid their goods and services. So you would be limited to selling $6,000 worth of food and beverage in a fiscal year.
So then it would just be a judgment call as to which clubs to serve and how much and how often.
Yeah, and I would also say you can't take any official action on deciding where those clubs are going to be conducting themselves. I don't think that typically, that granular level decision is made by a school district. But always just keep that in mind, that you can't take any official action that would benefit or create a detriment to your outside activity. In this case, your restaurant.
Follow-up question from an attendee. This person has no intention of spending more than $1,000 on campaigning. Is it really, it really isn't prudent to organize a campaign committee? Is that correct?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So you have to create a campaign committee by registering a campaign with a statement of organization. If you raise or spend more than $1,000, including your own money, if you are under the $1,000 threshold, you have two options. You can do nothing with the Ethics Board, and any campaign materials that you distribute will say "Paid for By" and the name and an address of the person responsible. Typically, that's the candidate. Or we have what we call the DRSFA form. And that stands for Simply For Attribution. And that's a really cool form that we created a number of years ago. And what that is, is a little affidavit, and it says basically, hey, Ethics Board, I'm running for this position. In this case, it would be the school board. You have to provide a little information about yourself as the candidate, where you're running, what position. And then there's a little affidavit that you have to acknowledge. You understand that if you go over $1,000, you have to create a committee. You understand that you can't take corporate contributions. You understand that you can't put signs on property that's owned by the government or a corporate entity, and that you have to put an attribution statement on certain campaign materials. And you submit that along with the name of a committee, and that allows you to use a committee name on your attribution statement. So when you, let's say you're saying under $1,000, but you're going to create a flyer, you will put "Paid for By" and the name of the registered committee that you created through the SFA form. So the SFA form is just registering a committee name. It's not really creating a committee. There's no follow-up or further reporting that you have to do unless you go over the $1,000 threshold. That is an option, you don't have to do it. Otherwise, you put your name and address on the attribution statement. The thing that I like about the SFA form is that it lets the public and your opponent, the press, as well as the Ethics Board, know that you kind of know what you're doing and that you haven't gone over the $1,000 threshold. If you don't file an SFA form and we get a phone call, say, from your opponent that says, hey, how come I have to file all these reports and my opponent hasn't done anything? Then that will cause us to give you a call and say, hey, we understand you're running for school board, and I just want to make sure you understand what the reporting obligations are. We'll have a conversation about whether you've gone over $1,000. And if you haven't, then no problem. If you have gone over $1,000, we'll help you create a committee. But by filing that DRSFA form, you kind of answer that question for the public, and they can see that you understand what your reporting obligations are and you haven't gone over the $1,000 threshold. The other thing that's nice about the DRSFA form is it eliminates the need to put your address on campaign materials. So again, if you have a registered committee, you put "Paid for By" in the name of your committee. Or if you file a DRSFA form, you're registering a committee name, and you put that committee name that you indicated on the SFA form. If you didn't either of those things, then you have to put your name and address on the attribution statement. That's not a big deal, but if you're like me, you might not want everybody to know where your home address is. And so by putting, by registering a committee name only, you don't have to put your address down. So that's just a personal preference. Another thing is, depending on what you're doing, there may not be a lot of space. If you put a small ad in the newspaper, you'll be eliminating another line or two if you don't have to put your address on it.
And we actually are going to talk more about campaign finance laws in the next slide. So that question was a great segue if we're ready to move on. So as Megan was just talking about, school board candidates must comply with the Iowa Ethics Campaign Finance Disclosure Laws. There are many provisions in the law. Today, we're just going to highlight three that we really think you should be aware of and be following. So go ahead, Megan.
Yeah, thanks, Tammy. So we have a lot of information on our website, and I would welcome you to review that information. And please, please, please don't hesitate to give us a call if you have any questions or aren't sure about something. We have a lot of people that give us a call, and the first thing they do is apologize for bothering us. And I just want you to know that you're not bothering us. That's what we're there for. We want you to be comfortable when you're running for office. The directive we get from the Ethics Board is we do not want to be a barrier or discourage people from running for office. So please feel free to give us a call anytime. Our phone number is at the beginning of the slide. Beginning, end, end, or you can Google us and find us that way. So I hope you, if you don't remember anything else that I've said today, that you'll remember that we're a friendly that we're a friendly agency and we're happy to take those questions. So the three big ones that I'd like you to focus on today is, first, you have to register a committee with us if you raise or spend more than $1,000, including your own money. A lot of candidates at the local level are not comfortable campaigning. They don't want to ask people for money. I don't blame them. And so people with a little bit of means sometimes just choose to use their own money and buy yard signs and what have you and don't fundraise. So whether you use all of your own money or some of your own money, you need to count your own money towards that $1,000 threshold. So if you raise more, raise or spend more than $1,000, you have to register a committee with us. And once you raise, or once you file that committee, you have to file campaign disclosure reports. So that threshold is $1,000. And within 10 days of crossing the threshold, you need to register a committee with us. The second thing is, on most of your campaign materials, you need to put in the attribution statement. That is the paid for by and the person responsible for it. So again, if you have a registered committee, it has to be registered with us. You put paid for by and the name of your committee. Alternatively, you can file that DRSFA form. And that's for folks that are under $1,000. You can register a committee name only for attribution statement purposes. And you don't have to file any further disclosure reports with us as long as you stay under $1,000. And then you can put paid for by in the name of the committee that you registered. If you don't have a registered committee and you haven't filed the DRSFA form, then you're going to put paid for by and the name and address of the person responsible, typically the candidate, but it doesn't always have to be. And then finally, campaign signs.
Actually, Megan, I have a question about that.
Yeah.
What about pens or really small pieces of campaign items? Do they all have to have the paid for by statement, even if they're little lapel pins or something like that?
No, no. There's, the attribution statement statute does have some exclusions. One of them is small items, the inclusion of which would be impractical. So that would be clothing, small items such as pens. I've seen Post-it notes, cowboy cards. And if you can't put it on there, I think it's a great idea too. But there are exclusions for the attribution statement. Another big exclusion is yard signs that are 32 square feet or less in size. Most of the campaign signs that you see will have a paid for by on it, which I think is a great idea because the campaign sign statute is a little confusing. And it says that if the sign is affixed to a building or a vehicle, it does have to have an attribution statement on it. If it's in a yard, it only has to have an attribution statement on it if it's in excess of 32 square feet. So if you haven't printed your yard signs yet, I would tell you just put the attribution statement on it. Then you don't have to worry about it. Again, I could talk about campaign signs and attribution statements for several minutes, probably half an hour. So I won't get into all the little nitty gritty details. For attribution statements, I think the easiest rule of thumb is if you can get it on there, put it on there. If you're not sure that it will fit, give us a call or look it up on our website and we can kind of help you through that process. But try, just get in the habit of putting it on everything that tells people to vote for you. And then you won't have to worry about it. And then lastly, campaign signs. Campaign signs are kind of complicated again because there's a lot of rules. The ones that are most important is you can always have campaign signs on residential property, regardless of who owns it. You cannot have signs on government property, including the right-of-way. And you can't have signs on property owned leased or occupied by a corporation. A lot of people when they hear corporation think business. But it's a, it's an entity that's filed articles of incorporation. And if you're not sure if somebody's incorporated, you can always go to the Secretary of State's website. And they have a nice little business lookup. And you can find whether or not the entity has filed articles of incorporation. If they have, they're incorporated and you can't put a sign on their property. If you're still confused, you can always give us a call. We can help you with that. But we have more and more businesses that are limited liability companies and not corporations. And the statute was never updated to reflect that fact. So you can put signs on property that's owned leased or occupied by an LLC, but not a corporation.
And Megan, what about that little area between the sidewalk and the street? How's that for yard signs?
Yeah, that's your right-of-way. Thank you, Harry. And you are not supposed to have a yard sign there. Also, in some areas, there might be a strip of grass as a median. And folks might put yard signs there. Those are also prohibited. One of the things that can kind of get you started on the wrong foot is if you buy a bunch of yard signs and then go place them willy-nilly without knowing what the campaign sign laws are. We've seen that happen where somebody puts 200 or 300 yard signs all in the right-of-way. And then they have to spend the next day driving around trying to move them. And it really depends on the locality. Some cities and counties will remove and throw away yard signs of any kind that's in the right-of-way. Some will only move them if they have time or if they get a complaint. But you don't want to mess around with that. Do your best to put those signs in the right spot. We get a lot of calls about campaign signs. I would, if we do get a call about one of your signs, we're going to ask you to review that location. And if it's in the right-of-way or if it's corporate property, to move the sign. We do understand that signs move around. You may have an event and hand out signs and people put them in places that they shouldn't. I've also heard from candidates that carefully place every sign. And then the people who own the property where they put the sign, maybe they mow and they put it in the right-of-way or some other location. So it happens. But do your best to follow those guidelines. And again, all of the nitty-gritty details are on our website. Or you're welcome to give us a call so we can help you through with that.
So Megan, what happens if people or candidates don't follow the guidelines that you just mentioned?
Right. So if you fail to file your campaign disclosure report or fail to file it on time, you're going to get a civil penalty. Those penalties depend on what type of election you're running, whether you've had other late reports and how many days late those reports are. So that's, you're going to have a financial penalty. But more importantly, you're depriving the public of the information that they're entitled to. And it's a black mark in your campaign if you can't file your report on time. But the U.S. Supreme Court has had many cases involving campaign disclosure and whether it's constitutional. And the court has said time and time again that the public has a right to know who is supporting candidates because it's reflective of the positions that they'll likely take in the future. And so by not filing your report on time, you're depriving the public of the ability to review that information and decide for themselves whether you have, you know, whether you're the best person to serve in that position.
We have another question from an attendee related to penalty. What happens if someone puts out materials without the proper attribution or committee name? What is the penalty for that?
Sure, thank you. So it depends on the material. Our, we have an administrative rule that says you have two options. You can republish the material or you can run a correction ad in your local newspaper. So republishing the material would be, let's say you send an email to your 200 closest friends and relatives telling them you're running for school board and asking them to support your campaign. And you forgot to put a paid for by on it and it's brought to our attention. We're going to ask you to resend that email with the attribution statement on it. If it's something like, let's say you did a mailer, you're probably not going to want to spend the money to resend that material. In that case, you're going to run a little correction ad in the newspaper saying that a mailer went out on the date that it did and that it should have said paid for by in the name of your committee or your name and address if you don't have a committee. So, and that's not the end of the world, but it can trip you up a little bit. And it's just something that can be costly and, you know, shows that you're not quite sure what you're doing. So it's, like I said, the best thing to do is do your best to put paid for by in the name of your committee if it's registered on all of your information that you don't have to worry about.
But make the correction. And then in future materials, just have it on there.
Right, right, right.
Okay. We have another question. This is a sign question. Like you said, you can just talk about signs.
I talked about signs for a long time.
Can you put a sign on a property where an LLC is located and rents the building from a corporation?
No, no. The sign statute says you cannot put a sign on property that's owned, leased or occupied by a corporation. So if the corporation does any of those three things, then you cannot put a sign on it unless it is residential property. And that's just balancing folks' rights as individuals versus our concern about corporations. So if you have a corporate landlord and it's a residential house, then you could put a sign there. But otherwise, you can't.
So we have another question and I'm going to ask it because it's kind of my jam. Do emails and social media posts require the paid for by statement even if there is no fee to pay for a post on social media?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it's kind of a misnomer because you put paid for by. And we get a lot of calls that say, well, I didn't have to pay for Facebook. I didn't have to pay. I got a free Gmail account. There is nothing paid for. The attribution statement statute says the person responsible for the published material, and it does include things like emails and websites. And so you do need to put an attribution statement even if you didn't pay for that service. I wish it just said responsible, you know, responsible party or something like that. But you do need to put a paid for by on it. We do have an advisory opinion and it talks about social media. So if you're posting information about your campaign or anybody's campaign on your personal Facebook page, you do not have to have an attribution statement on it. If you have a Facebook page that you created for a campaign, then you do need to have an attribution statement on it. So for example, if you create a Facebook page that says took her for school board and there's a little bio about me as a candidate and pictures and information about my candidate events and where to go if you want a yard sign and that sort of thing, then I would need to put an attribution statement on it. I would just put it under the about section where you can put a little bit of information about the page. So you don't have to put it on each post. But on that one section, you need to put paid for by. And again, the name of the registered committee if you filed the statement of organization or the DRSFA form. And if you didn't do either of those, then your name and address. I will tell you, there's a lot of Facebook pages that don't have that on there. But if we see it, we'll ask it added. Emails, and I should know this, but I don't. We did an advisory opinion a few years ago with a hard number. I think it's 100. I can't quite remember. But if a candidate, PAC or party sends out an email to more than a certain number of folks, it needs to have an attribution statement on it. Again, I just tell people, put it on there and then you don't have to worry about it. But I believe it's 100. It's a hard number that we set. So it'd be a nice black and white.
It's better to be proactive than reactive.
Right, right.
All right, ready to keep moving? Because we have a very fun scenario we're going to do next and that might take a while.
Yeah, well, and I'm sorry to interrupt. But I would just say, same thing with the emails. So let's say your best friend wants to help you out and send an email to everybody that's in her address list on Gmail. She wouldn't have to put an attribution statement on it. But if the candidate or campaign is sending it, you do. Now, you may have a situation where your friend or relative is forwarding on your email. So that's why it's a good idea just to put it on there so you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, that's a good point. So we have a scenario that we're going to talk through. And then you will answer the scenario and then we'll discuss. So the scenario is, a citizen in your district is also running for an open seat on the same board. They ask you to run as a block or a group to share brochures and signs and to campaign together at events. Bonus, you could even share costs. So what would you do in this scenario? Heck yes, I'll run as a candidate block. It seems way easier than running on my own. Or no thanks, I'd prefer to run my own separate campaign. So I'm going to launch that poll now with those two choices, Tammy. And again, everyone should see it who doesn't have a filter blocking your opportunity and to see it. So let's see what people say. We'll give a couple more seconds. It looks like about half of our folks have voted. So they must be thinking about this. Okay, let's go ahead and end the poll and I'll let you talk through the results. So it looks like the majority of our attendees would say, no thanks, I'd prefer to run my own separate campaign. And we've got 10% saying that they would run as a candidate block. So I'm going, you have to go ahead and take it back to the PowerPoint. Stop to share the results.
Sure.
I bet you're going to talk about that. So we're going to start with, is it legal? Megan, is it legal to run as a candidate block or group?
Yes. There, if you choose to do so, you're essentially running as a PAC. A PAC, if it raises or spends more than $1,000, has to register with the Ethics Board just like you would a candidate committee, only it's a PAC. The headache that comes with this is if the pro-rata share of the PAC's contribution to each candidate is more than $1,000 bucks, then each candidate has to also create a candidate committee. So let's say three people are going to run as a block and they spend more than $3,000 together. Then each candidate would have to register a candidate committee as well as there's one PAC and then three candidate committees showing the in-kind contributions from the PAC to the candidate. So in other words, when you run as a block, it is legal under campaign finance rules, but there's often double reporting. You're recording as a PAC and then you're recording as a candidate committee. And that in and of itself often discourages folks from running as a PAC or as a, as a, as a block, as you say.
And this actually, I didn't mention at the beginning, but this is a real scenario. I mean, we've been asked here at IASB about candidate blocks and you've been asked about candidate blocks.
Yeah, we get a, I bet we get a couple of questions every election cycle about this.
So Harry, is it wise to run as a candidate block or group?
For candidates and those who are elected board members, you'll hear this, these two questions often from IASB. Is it legal and is it wise? And is it wise part, a couple of thoughts. One is certainly, we can identify benefits, potential benefits of running as a block or a group. All right, I'd like to focus more on some cautions. And we really base this on the feedback we get from candidates and board members after elections every cycle. And they sound like this, the concerns or cautions. And I would say the filter we suggest to candidates is think beyond the campaign. If I run as a block or a group, what might the impact of that be? So a what-if scenario. Say you win, but the other two candidates Say you win, but the other two candidates who ran on a block with you do not win. And I think it's, it's instructive to think about how might this impact my relationship with other board members that were not a part of my PAC? That, that dynamic certainly can play out after the election. Another one would be, um, we, again, we hear this from candidates who, who have run on a block, who will say, you know, three months into my board work, I'm experiencing this. Running on a block kind of set that expectation that the three of us, we're going to be voting in way X or in a certain way Y on issues or topics. And now as a board member, I'm learning information I didn't realize, didn't know as a candidate and that's changing my thinking about how I might vote on the topic. But I'm caught in this dilemma because constituents and my fellow members of the block assumed, or I created that expectation, we would be voting together. So those are probably the two, two biggest things. I think also what we hear from candidates is when blocks are formed, that sometimes can have a pretty strong impact on messages on social media. And once those comments are, we all know this, once those comments are out there in print, they're there and they're likely to remain. And even when folks delete them, communities and those on social media have a pretty good memory. And so again, once it's there, it's out there. I think Megan, you had an observation from a, from a campaign in a recent election where there was a block and share that with us, would you please?
Sure, so I started in my position at the end of 2010 and I believe it was 2011. But one of the suburban school districts near Des Moines had, if I remember right, four incumbents that decided to run as a block. And they did the double reporting like I talked about. And all of their signs, all of their materials, all of their events were as a block and all four of them lost. And I don't know if it would have mattered whether they ran as a block or not, if they would have still, still, uh, lost or not, but I, that was my first experience with the block. And I had a lot of calls from people saying, can they do that? Is that legal? Is that ethical? And we would explain that yes, it is, they had to create the PAC and then the candidate committee. But I think it did create a little controversy and, and as I mentioned, it, they weren't successful.
Thanks.
There's one option you could do, kind of an in-between. And we see this sometimes where folks will have joint events. So they don't run as a block, meaning everything isn't shared, but they might, let's say they have a meet-the-candidate event on a Saturday morning and, and they invite their friend that's also running to, to participate with them at such an event. Under Iowa's campaign finance laws, one candidate committee cannot give to another candidate committee, but you can share equally any kind of expenses associated with that. So they, so two candidates could have a shared event and then just share the cost.
Great. Anything else, Harry?
I'm good, thank you.
Our final section is cautionary tales. So Molly and Megan are going to share some real-life examples that candidates can learn from. So Molly, go ahead.
Sure, so the first point is to always collect more signatures than you need. I talked about this a little bit earlier. But every, so at the Secretary of State's office, we take paperwork for statewide candidates, candidates for the House of Representatives and the state senate. And this past year, we did have a candidate who was unsuccessful and getting placed on the ballot because they, their petitions were objected to. And enough signatures did not count that they did not meet the requirement to go on the ballot. So the best way to insulate yourself from a potential objection is to make sure that you have more signatures than you need for the minimum threshold. And then my second tip is to go and turn your paperwork into the school board secretary in person. Maybe it's because Des Moines is a little bit further away from, for some people, but sometimes we will have statewide candidates who will mail in their paperwork. Personally, I think that's a little risky because we have to receive the original paperwork. So if that's lost in the mail or UPS has an issue, you know, there's really no replacing that paperwork. So my recommendation is to walk that paperwork in, take it to the board secretary. That way, if there's any issues, they can let you know at that time and you can decide, you know, figure out what next steps you need to take if there needs to be any corrections.
Molly, can someone else other than the candidate turn in paperwork?
They can, you can have somebody file on your behalf. But something to keep in mind is that your affidavit of candidacy has to be notarized. So it would have, the notarization process, you signing it and being notarized would have to be done before you turn your paperwork over to somebody else to file.
I think there's a, maybe a, it's a good idea to not wait till the last day of, right?
Yes, and I would definitely recommend, so the deadline is next Thursday, the nineteenth. So you know, maybe take one last weekend to get a couple of extra signatures. But I would really encourage you to file early next week instead of waiting until the deadline.
Good advice, yeah. All right, so school board candidates sometimes have, um, a real desire to send emails to all the school district employees. And you can do that so easily now with many districts by going on the school district's website and seeing everybody's email address. And we discourage that because Iowa Code Section 68A.505, which prohibits the expenditure of public monies for political purposes. We have an advisory opinion that says that while technically it's not illegal for a candidate to send political material to government email addresses, we nevertheless discourage it because you could be creating a situation where, let's say a teacher or principal or school nurse or associate forwards your information on, your campaign information on to their friends and family using the school district's email address while they're at work. They have now caused an expenditure of public monies for political purposes because they're getting paid to distribute materials for a candidate. And so that's a big no-no. And so we discourage folks from doing that because you may inadvertently cause a school employee to get in trouble. And we've had that happen over the years where a teacher or we've had bus drivers, we've had different folks forward on political materials to other people using the school email system and they're at work and therefore there is, even though it's a small expenditure, it is an expenditure of public monies and we have been known to issue civil penalties in the one to two-hundred-dollar range for that. And more importantly, it, it's embarrassing. And so it's embarrassing for the school employees. And with public records requests, it's real easy for your opponent or the public to ask for those emails and have a documentation of, of what happened. So we discourage that. Another thing that candidates from time to time will do is bring in, say, a flyer or some kind of information about their candidacy and ask the school secretary to put that in all the teachers' mailboxes. And again, that's a no-no because you are asking a school employee while they're at work and getting paid by the district to distribute your campaign materials. So just keep your campaign out of the school district's official duties and responsibilities. You should be campaigning on your own and leaving the school district to do the important work that it's set out to do to educate our children.
Do we have any questions you want to add?
We have one question, but it's not pertaining specifically to this and I think I'll answer it as we're talking about our resources.
Perfect, so since we're coming up close on our time, we've had a great conversation.
So we have a resourceous slide here. Hopefully, all the candidates that are attending and those that are watching later on have been to ISB's Get On Board campaign webpage, we've got lots of good info on there. Megan's website, the Ethics Board website, has a lot of really great information. You can go more in-depth on what she talked about today on the website and that URL is here as well. And then the Secretary of State's office has a lot of info about filing, they have candidate paperwork, all of that stuff on there. Anything else you wanted to add about your webpage?
I don't, so our webpage is also great as if part of your campaign, you're going to collect voter registrations or encourage people to vote X and T. We have information about how, what forms you have to use and what you can hand out to voters and how to return those to your county auditor as well.
Very good. So bookmark these websites until your November fifth, I guess. Actually, keep hers if you get elected to the school board, you always need the Ethics Board website and ISB, yeah.
Well, this has been a great webinar and I, I know Harry and company won't toot your own horn, but I mean, this is really kind of cutting-edge, but most associations across the country are not doing these kind of things. And it's a really great service to all these candidates. So it's just one more reason why it's great to be an Iowa.
Well, thank you so much. And along those same lines, we do have two more of our board candidate webinars coming up on the twenty-fourth. And we didn't pay you to say that, but. The twenty-fourth, Confessions of a School Board Member, Perks and Pitfalls, when we get, dig in deeper with veteran board members, things to think about and know about as a candidate and a board member. And then wrapping our Tuesday talks with ISB, we'll be focusing on what this is really all about and how we keep the focus on students. Looking forward to that. And then some other resources, Tammy, that's important to talk about. Our statewide annual conference, which is only sixteen days after the election and we have room for people who are running for the board and get elected. Registration is open now, talk to your board secretary and please mark these dates on your calendar, November twentieth and twenty-first, if you choose to run and win. The question that came in that I want to answer in conjunction with the slide is somebody asked, how do they read about and learn about Chapter Twenty-One, the Open Meetings Law, as a candidate? And so I'm putting in the chat feature right now the Iowa Public Information Board website because you can go there and read if I can hit the right button. If you, oh, sorry, I'm going to send it to all the analysts, here we go, to all attendees, here we go. Sorry, everyone. Go to the IPib website and, it's still not working, I'll do that in a minute. Go to the IPib website, Iowa Public Information Board website, read about Chapter Twenty-One. But at our annual convention on November twentieth, we have a pre-convention workshop for newly-elected board members where we'll be covering some of those essential ideas. And then on Thursday, we'll be going more into the Open Meetings Law. And then at, once elected, you have access to our website, which includes FAQs, our online course, and of course, you can call our staff and ask.
I would just put in a plug, that online course is, what's the total timeline, about two hours? A person could take that in chunks. So once elected, you'd be able to access that, that would, that'd be a good, great resource for you.
Exactly, thanks, Harry. There we go, IPib's now in the chat. And finally, all of our information is up here. If you want to call or email any of us, we're all happy to answer any questions you have. And if we can't answer them, me primarily, I'll forward you on to Megan or Molly. So while we're wrapping up, we'll still be monitoring for questions, but please continue to send those in our call. In the meantime, on behalf of ISB, thank you all for taking the time to learn together with us. We say this, but one of the best attributes for a candidate and a new board member is your willingness and commitment to learn, so thank you. We are here to help and just a phone call away. This webinar was recorded and will be posted on our website for viewing along with the PowerPoint within twenty-four hours. You'll receive an email with a link to a survey about our webinar, please take time to respond. We read and we really use that information to inform our supports and services. And this has just been such a great and helpful conversation. Thank you, Megan, Molly, and Tammy, and Harry for sharing your experience and insights with us today. Thank you and take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.